I'm sorry, I wasn't ready. I thought it's ready. Are you ready, Adam? It's okay. Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, roll call, please.
All right, Tanya Davis?
Here.
Here.
Vivian Wyatt?
Here.
Britt Spence?
Here.
Vanessa Batavia?
And we have a quorum. So we need to make a change to tonight's agenda. We're going to move a 3G from New Business up to the front for them. So we need a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to move the special event request 3G up to the front of New Business.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now we needed to get a motion to approve the minutes from July 21st, July 29th, and July 30th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting of July 21st, 2025, the council executive session, July 29th, 2025, and the budget workshop on July 30th, 2025.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Staying? Okay, first up, we have Old Business. Council adopt resolution 2025A8A to formally memorialize the vote taken at the previous meeting concerning the town manager's spending limit. Which we had discussed this previously.
You want me to just tee this in a little bit?
Yeah, you can.
So you, as you mentioned, you already voted on this last meeting to increase that level. Because it's a policy and we had adopted that policy by resolution, this just formalizes what you had already considered and adopted last time, which the law allows you to do, but just creates that paper record as well for the towns books showing that increase in the spending limit.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number 2025-8A, raising the town manager's spending limit to $20,000.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? You may sign that. Okay, on to New Business. Council will consider, oh, nope, we're going to, I was just, yep. Special event request from Mount Vernon Education Foundation for Turkey Trot 5K, Saturday, November 2nd, starting at 8:00 AM. And is there someone here to, yeah, come on up. Give us your name and yeah, please, please.
Well, hi, I'm Casey. I'm the Assistant Food Service Director for Mount Vernon Schools, but I'm here on behalf of the Mount Vernon Education Foundation. We are asking for permission to utilize downtown Fortville on November 22nd to host a Turkey Trot themed 5K. Parentheses, still figuring out the name. Our hopes are to start and stop in Landmark Park. The whole kind of reasoning behind it is we would ideally like to raise funds for our angel fund, which is for negative student balances for meals. And that's kind of the whole reasoning. Yeah, there's 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM is the whole kind of timeline. So that way, most of the shops on Main Street should be open afterwards and kind of promote people to go that way after. Our hopes are to have a little map with like what different shops are and what they kind of do. Restaurants as well, everything, the whole nine yards to kind of push people there. It's a week before Small Business Saturday. This is Saturday before Thanksgiving. So that's kind of the whole thought process there. And yeah, we'll use volunteers, mostly adults, to block the streets. There was a 5K done previously and we used their map. We just switched the direction so that way Stat Street can open sooner, as soon as the last runner is through, to hopefully not have a ton of traffic back up. But yeah, that's kind of the logistics as far as that's concerned. There's some information. You know, we would like to have some booths there for local organizations to be able to promote what they kind of do to help those need, as well as, you know, reach out for volunteers and volunteer opportunities. And then, why does it matter? Every year, the corporation ends up having to pay the food service department for those negative balances, and that takes away from other extracurriculars and teachers. So the education foundation really wants to make that burden less for them and more for, to give back to the community and the teachers and all that. But yeah. That's kind of what our request is.
Any questions for her?
Classic. P-A-S-M-K.
Closer, will it be what's ingrained the entire time of the race, or how does that, how will that work?
Northeast, and then down and around. So the how do I explain it? The top part, the northern part of the route would only be closed once the first runner starts coming, and the south part of the road would open as soon as the last runner finishes or is through. Runner walker, I shouldn't say runners. Great question.
I know you've been talking to Heath. Did you talk to the police already?
Yeah, I emailed with that with Pat, and he didn't seem too concerned about the roads. I did also talk to, and I'm not going to remember his name, Fire Department. They were not concerned either. Obviously, they get right of way if there's an emergency and 100% they should get right. They don't think EMS needs to be on site since they are so close and centrally located, should there be an issue.
Our special events request policy is if you're expecting 50 people or more to be within the public right of way for an event, do we require insurance? So additional insurance for the town?
Yeah, the education foundation has reviewed that part of the special events permit and thinks their insurance should be more than willing to handle it.
Great, thanks.
I will definitely have Renee. Who does she need to send it to? Clerk Treasurer's Office. I will definitely make sure she hears that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for Mount Vernon Educational Foundation to hold the Turkey Trot 5K on Saturday, November 22nd, starting at 8:00 AM, ending at 11:00 AM.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Good luck. I hope it turns out really well for you. Yeah. Okay, next New Business. We have councilists to consider first reading of ordinance 2025A8A? No? Is that right?
No, that's written. So this would be ordinance 8A.
Oh, 8A.
Voluntary annexation of three acres at 8683 North Fortville Pike, the Shogren property. Adam, you want to?
Sure. So this is a 100% voluntary annexation, meaning the property owner is petitioning the town to annex into town limits, which all it does is have the effect of changing the jurisdiction, governing jurisdiction of the property instead of unincorporated Hancock County, the town of Fortville. The, the main reason to annex, and it applies in this case, is to be able to take advantage of town utilities, water and sewer. So in this case, the buyer's estate subdivision is being built around the project. And as part of the planning efforts for that project, stubs for water and sewer were provided to the property. So he will have the ability to hook up to those services. He pays a, a lower impact fee because it's within town limits. And then he would pay, they would pay a lower monthly surcharge because it's in town limits. So that's the other advantage to them to doing that. So this is just the introductory ordinance. Per annexation, per state law, there's the next step in the process is the mandatory public hearing, which would happen in September. And then, and that applies to all of these three annexations, by the way. So we have to put an ad in the newspaper for that. It would happen in September. And then after the public hearing at a following meeting after that, we could have the second reading of the ordinance, where you'd be, you would be free to adopt it. And before you actually adopt the ordinance at that same meeting, they would have the, we'd have the fiscal plan that's mandated by law in front of you. So pretty, pretty standard, nothing unique or unusual about this particular request. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. And actually, I think Mr. Shrogan joined on the line, probably just to observe.
Yeah, he's pretty much surrounded, so I can see why he'd want to take advantage of that.
We did, the, you'll notice that the property across the street is also unincorporated. I did reach out to that property owner and talked to them a few times. We even met. And it was a hard sell for them because their taxes would go up a little bit. And most importantly, they didn't need water or sewer. They were happy with those services that they have right now. So unfortunately, they did not want to join the annexation, but we respect that.
What's the benefit to us especially? Is it tax money?
To the town? Yeah, the, yes, as part of the, the property tax pie, there are different agencies that get a slice of that tax. And if, if a property owner is already at the tax caps, then we just insert a slice of that pie. If they're not at the, at the tax caps yet, which does happen, then their taxes do go up a bit to account for Fortville's taxation. The benefit to the town is really to just have a more coordinated effort. Instead of having a patchwork pattern of some properties in the county, some are in the town, just to ensure that it's all in one jurisdiction in this particular case. And then, of course, it allows us to do planning and zoning for those properties. In addition, those residents of the territory can vote in town elections. They can serve on boards. And really, I'd say the other, the other big advantage too is for emergency services, that's very clear that it's the town of Fortville responding as opposed to Hancock County Sheriff's. And really, the, the, from our perspective, frankly, the, the tax money is, some of it is staying here in Fortville because residents of a territory use our roads, they use our services. So in this case, that's one of the advantages for us.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-8A, voluntary annexation of three acres at 8683 North Fortville Pike.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have the first reading of ordinance 2025-8B, a voluntary annexation of 18 acres at 7795 North 200 West at Onning Innovations Property.
All right, for this particular case, it's a very similar explanation as, as to the last one. Again, it's a voluntary annexation. The main reason that they would like to annex is so that they can connect to Fortville's sewer system. My understanding is that this is the, it's called Onning Innovations. It's a small factory just south of the school district complex. It's, of course, unincorporated. There, I believe their septic system is failing or there's a plumbing issue. They want to connect to town sewer. So in order to do that, they would annex into the town. So this annexation will also allow the town to grow further south because when you annex land, you have to meet certain contiguity thresholds, which each of these three properties do meet the, the minimum criteria by law. So same, same thing with, with this property. This is just first reading, and then the mandatory public hearing would come in September.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-8B, voluntary annexation of 18 acres at 7795 North 200 West.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So next up, we have the first reading of ordinance 2025-8C, a voluntary annexation of 120 acres near US 36 and North 300 West, the Stokes Property.
So for this particular one, again, very similar to the other two. This is a 120 acre, so it's a, it's a pretty sizable area. You can see it on the, on the map that was provided. It's right near Broadway and 300 West. It's farmland, and the property owners are in the process of putting it on the market. They want to sell it. And there's a pretty reasonable, reasonable likelihood of, of that property developing in the near future because of its close proximity to water and to sewer. And so the advantage to the, the property owner is that, you know, they wouldn't have to pay any increase in taxes. They'd sell it. But most importantly, whoever buys it would be able to have access to water and sewer, and they've already gone through the annexation process. So it's one less thing that a developer would have to do. So that's really the benefit to the Stokes to doing that. Again, it would be different if the likelihood of a property developing would be low or it wouldn't happen anytime soon, but this is a, it's on the west side of town. So, and it's along Broadway near 300 West, so a pretty good chance of, of developing. So there's, there's benefits to both, both parties.
This is a property we talked about, the comp plan to make it so it would be.
Yes. Yeah, and actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because we shared the comprehensive plan with the property owner. That included the apartments, the land use that I remember you had asked for. And the, the good news is that the property owner has agreed to those land uses that way. So that comprehensive plan map was already fully vetted by the council and the plan commission and the public. So what we, what the game plan is, is when the, when the property is zoned accordingly in Fortville, then it would, it would align with zoning districts that align with the comprehensive plan map. So what we would probably do is have our town engineering consultant would probably put together a legal description of those areas so that we know exactly which district. There were three or four different zoning districts in here that we mentioned to see which district which, where would be located. And then the land would be automatically zoned accordingly upon annexation into town. So that was, that was encouraging.
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-8C, voluntary annexation of 120 acres near US 36 and North 300 West.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have council to consider the first reading of ordinance 2025-8D, request by owner Mike Thompson for a rezone of one acre from residential 3.5 to community commercial at the southeast corner of Broadway in Ohio. I think it's south, but northeast, southeast, I don't know what you want to call it, but Broadway in Ohio. Public hearing scheduled for the plan commission meeting is on August 26th at 6:30.
So this is the property that is just north of where that planned gas station is. For this particular request, there are two investors that, that own the property. One is a longtime Fortville resident, and they don't have any plans right now to develop the property. They want to put it on the market, and they would like commercial zoning. The comprehensive plan map shows this area as being suitable for a commercial, given its, its location. So to be clear, there are no plans at this time for a gas station. I know some people have been inquiring about that. So from here, it would go to the plan commission, and they would review the proposal in some more depth. And then would make a recommendation, and it would come back for you all. They would, so there'd be a public hearing at the plan commission that would come back to you at a subsequent council meeting for your adoption. I think the, the, the only other thing worth noting for this request is there are actually four lots that are part of it. And those lots are platted lots as part of the Colonial Village subdivision. Of course, that subdivision was platted back in the 50s, I believe. And to my knowledge, those lots have been vacant ever since. Now, under, right now, it's zone residential, so somebody could build a house. Now, as we know, I, I think, at least from a planning perspective, the likelihood of somebody wanting to build homes on those lots is probably low because of the amount of traffic in that area. So that's at least the other positive to considering rezoning it to commercial. And then, just to be clear, if, and I'm not saying this is the case because we have no indication of it, but just based on the property size of it being only about acre, acre and a half, if the gas station ever wanted to come in, in the future, under the zoning ordinance, they would have to acquire a special exception in order to, to do that from the border zoning appeals. So if, if you all felt strongly about not having a gas station, you wanted to preempt that discussion altogether, I believe unless, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, in theory, if you wanted to put in the ordinance itself as part of the rezone that this gas station, or this property shall not have gas stations, I believe you have the authority to do that. Although even if that were to be the case, in theory, the, a future gas station developer could seek a use variance, some sort of variance from the BZA. But just, I, I put that out there for your consideration. If that was the direction you wanted to go, you have the authority to do that.
Have they got a, have they talked to any potential buyers about the property? Have they?
They haven't said anything to me.
But this, yeah, this is just the first reading. It's got to go through the other venting till it'll get to a second reading.
Correct.
Yeah. This one here is. I feel comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, the, the reason that we take these first readings, rezones to you all first is to see if there's any feedback from the council right now on the proposal. Either you are okay with it, you hate it, you have comments, whatever it may be. This is definitely the best time to get those comments out there.
I think it'd be a good commercial property, but I think it's designed for a certain type of entity, I think, to go in there, not just, it'd have to be, because it's kind of an awkward lot combination anyway, so. But I think it would be a good, good place for something small.
I'd be happy with it not being a gas station.
Yeah, we certainly would all be happy with that, I'm sure, so.
I just am concerned with the people that are going to have to live next door to it.
Sure.
Because if it's not a gas station, then they're going to be looking at the back of somebody's building and trash and.
It might be a sound barrier for them, though.
It could be. Well, it goes to the public, right? So they can come and, I would love to hear what. Is, this is one of these cases where the neighbors are notified.
Absolutely, yeah, there's. So ju- just to refresh everybody's memory on how, how that works really quickly is for something like a rezone, there's three elements of the public notification that needs to happen and has happened, is they have to prepare for the public hearing at the plan commission. So the town posts a sign out there 10 days advance of the meeting. We did that. And then they have to do a mailing to property owners that are adjacent. It's two property owners deep or 600 feet, whichever is less. So that's how, that's how you determine. Or if there's an interested party, you can sometime, you can go beyond if, if you think that applies. But at a minimum, two properties, 600 feet. And then they did that. That has to go out 10 days in advance. And then that, the third item is publication in the newspaper. And so they've made arrangements to do that. We've, and we provide them with the mailing list. We perfect the notice because it's got the Zoom information that's particular to that case. And then we get them the listed names based on the county records, so we help them out with that. So all that's been done.
I would encourage people to take a look at it that are affected by it, so we can hear from everybody.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-8D.
Is there any public comment? I'm just curious. There's a lot of people here. Do anybody want to make a comment about that? I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
I, I would like to make a comment. This is Brittany Layton, 1073 West Jade Drive, Fortville. I would just like to request the council's special consideration. This property does border on the northwest and south with residential properties. So I would just like to ask for some extra consideration when determining to rezone to community commercial and consider what kind of impacts having a business located right there, adjacent to all these homes, many of which are filled with kids, and the added traffic that that could bring, et cetera.
Adam, is there any guidance on what types of businesses can go into a community commercial?
Sure. So a couple of things. First, in the zoning ordinance, there is a use matrix. So of course, just as a refresher, it allows, it mentions all different uses under the sun that are allowed in life, and it says what zoning districts that they are allowed in or they're not allowed in. So for commercial community that is really geared towards commercial retail, it's geared towards commercial services. And it's, it's the most common commercial zoning district that we have in town. Secondly, those are all very good considerations to see how it would impact the neighbors. And the zoning ordinance also does require certain amounts of buffering, buffer yard standards, both in terms of a certain parameter for how wide the strip needs to be in addition to the setbacks. Then there are landscaping requirements, and there are sometimes fencing requirements as well. And at the, it's a good reminder that at the plan commission, I can provide that information about what, what's required. And any deviation from that would require a, a variance from the BZA.
Yeah, because to Brittany's point, you know, I, I wouldn't want to have a, have a repeat of the gas station situation where something is zoned the way it is, and then somebody else comes in and wants a variance, and then all of then somebody else comes in and wants a variance and then all of the sudden, we have a thing that a lot of people in the community are saying that they don't want. So is there? So this is a rezone, you know, this is a request to rezone to commercial community of which there could be a variety of different types of businesses, but we're here thinking, you know, what about the neighbors and what kind of business is going to go there? So, you know, I guess my thought would be, is there a way to approve this with some kind of stipulation about what could go in there? Because because the next step would be, as we just learned with the gas station, the next step is is going to be what it goes to the planning commission. And then somebody gets to go in there and then ask the BZA if they can put some kind of business there. And we just went through this, that none of us have any real input into the BZA. You know, they just get to go decide, so.
Okay. You are free to restrict the types of uses that are allowed even within that zoning district as part of your ordinance. It's it's infrequent, it's not done often. But you it can happen. So like I said, with a with a gas station, just because that topic's come up a lot, is for that particular use, it is allowed in this zoning district, but only subject to a special exception through the BZA. So really quickly, when it comes to those different uses in the land use table, the the use table that I mentioned, many uses are what they call allowed by right, which means after they get the zoning in place, as that use is allowed, period. Then there are other uses that are special exception, which basically says, yes, it can be allowed in the zoning district, but subject to the BZA reviewing it and approving it or disapproving it. So but to answer your your question specifically is if there are certain uses in the zoning ordinance that you want to restrict out as part of your rezone, you can do that.
Do we have to do that now?
No.
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 First reading.
Okay.
It's going to come back to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wonder if we didn't have.
After it goes through the process.
Right, right. I I think it would be good for us to consider doing that because, you know, just as another example, for example, when when the Harmony Dentistry owners came here for the rezone for that building on Merrill Street, I wanted voting no because I didn't have any idea what kind of business was going to go in there. And I'm I'm pleased in the end to find that it's a veterinarian going in there, I think. And that's not my favorite thing in the middle of a neighborhood, but there could be worse. But I voted no because I didn't have any idea what was going in there. So this is maybe a chance to be more proactive, so thank you.
Anything else from anybody? Okay. You want to finish your motion?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash eight D. Rezone of one acre residential three point five to community commercial at the northeast corner of Broadway and Ohio Street.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next up, we have a position available on the planning commission seat. We had two applicants, Shelby Hartman and Zach Fager. And I don't know, Zach, I think Zach isn't, nobody's here, I don't think. You are, yeah. I was trying to look for your face, like you want to come up and tell us a little bit about you and.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shelby Hartman. We just, my husband and I and my parent in laws both just moved to Fortville about a month ago, so July sixteenth last month. So we have truly enjoyed our move out here. We moved from Brownsburg, so I've lived in Hamilton County, Hendricks County, and now Hancock County, so covering all the H's. We're excited to make this community our home. I work at Citizens Energy Group in Indianapolis for the utility company. I've been there for about six years now, working with our emergency dispatchers and our some of our field personnel. So I do training and development with Citizens. So I'm looking forward to potentially with your all's vote to join that committee, use my experience there and my excitement as we're moving into a new community here to not only learn more about Fortville, but use my past experiences to bring additional lift to our community here.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for the interest. Appreciate that.
And Tanya, I'm online.
There he is. Hi, Zach.
Hi, how's everybody? Thanks for allowing me to speak for just a minute. Sorry, I couldn't be in person today. Schedules didn't align, but I got to talk to you recently, but just a little background, I work at Xfinity Communities, a part of Comcast in the multifamily site. So that brings me the interest in the planning committee. And then Lauren and Lauren, my wife, and I have lived here for about five years. We have two young kids. Lauren's actually a teacher at McCordville Elementary, so we have a vested interest in the growth and success of Fortville. We moved here from Hamilton County, so a lot like the last story, and I grew up in Delaware County. So been a part of a small town my whole life, and it's really why we moved from Hamilton County to Fortville, the school systems and the charm. Getting to ride our bikes into town is is something that we enjoy doing. So we're just so interested in helping the community grow and and thrive and but mainly keeping the, you know, the charm of the small town. I think it's one of the biggest positives that we have here is that we can still be a small town, even though we have astronomical growth all around us and we see some of that coming. But just to be able to help in in the vision and and kind of help everyone see what Fortville is and and bring more light to our town, I think is something that I would like to do. My experience currently, I work with developers on a day to day basis, so I have a little bit of extra insight into how things go and looking at Platts and PUDs and all of that fun and exciting thing that that is that that goes into development. But I also know all of the challenges that come with that, too. So I get to talk to developers and owners on on multiple occasions weekly on the things that they're going through and permitting and schedules. And all of that is great, but I know it's a lot of work. And so I'd I'd love to just put my name on the hat, would love to be a part of that and help our town grow and keep the charm that we're that we're known for. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Zach. And I think is this council or this is my my president? Yeah. I want to thank you both for, you know, putting your hat in the ring and wanting to make a make a difference somehow, and I encourage you to keep doing that. I'm going to pick Zach just because he's been here a little bit longer, and I'm sure after you're here for a while that you'll you'll get more involved and you'll see things that you want to get involved in. So please come back if we have another opening because it does happen periodically, so. And there's the RDC and also the BZA that that have commission seats that you could look at as well. But thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And Zach, you're, we'll see you at the next meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have counsel to consider the renewal of Indy Sharks Fortville Community Center contract for twenty twenty six, and that would be Heath, I believe.
Well, Heath's coming up here. You've got clean and red line versions of that. And as I think Keith mentioned at the last meeting and the meeting before, the Sharks did notify him of their desire to extend for another year. This is a year by year lease and at the same rental and terms. And so, as you can see in the red line, the only changes were to the dates, twenty five and twenty six. Also, in the original graph last year and negotiating that with the Sharks attorney, there were two paragraphs that we just intentionally omitted. So I got rid of those and squared up the numbers, but the only substantive changes were to the dates. Keith, pass the baton to you if you've got anything.
I don't have anything to add. It's a a simple renewal outside of we've been or I've been very happy with their ability to obviously bring in families into the community, but just everything that they've done and around the building and and taking care of the things that they're supposed to take care of that we've asked them to take care of. So I don't have any issues with the renewal, but obviously this is your decision. So the only thing that I did notice, and I believe Alex, on the clean version that you sent, the very first line said August. Our previous one was September. So it it the verbiage is in here that it's September one to August thirty first, so just that first.
But that's just the date that you.
Yeah, so we'll plan on dating it that first day after, if approved, the first day after the thirty first, so September first, so.
You don't have, just to be clear, when a contract is signed, parties are allowed to agree when the effective date is. So we have that in there.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I don't think so. I think they've been a great great group to have around. They've done a lot. Okay, so I think it looks good.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the Indy Sharks Fortville Community Center contract for two thousand twenty six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next up, we have department reports, Joe.
Okay, I've got a few items for this evening. If you'll remember, the last few meetings, I've talked to you about the street paving and how I was wanting to do some additional paving there on Maple Street, some north of Broadway, some south, and then again, the alley behind Napa. In order to do that, I'm going to ask counsel to allow me to sign a change order for that contract. And the change order would be up to a hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. The paving doesn't cost all of that. Let's see, it's about thirty one thousand of that will go toward paving. The other twenty nine thousand I want to use toward additional sidewalks. So with the with the contract or the the grant that we got through Endot, it can only be used in Timber Ridge subdivision. So the work that we're doing in Timber Ridge right now, we'll have about eighteen hundred lineal feet of sidewalks replaced. And with the additional funds from the change order, I can do another fourteen hundred and twenty two roughly lineal feet, which would bring our total this year up to three thousand two hundred and thirty three feet and a price of two hundred and sixty two dollars in sidewalk work. So that'll be a pretty good chunk of sidewalk replacement. So if you would approve me to sign a change order for that amount of a hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars not to exceed.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order not to exceed one hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
A second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. The second matter I've got is, I believe it's the last council meeting or a couple council meetings ago. We've all witnessed the decorative streetlights down here on Broadway that got hit and are still laying on the ground. They've not been replaced yet. That's still an Endot project, and they've got those poles ordered, and they've been ordered for quite some time. It's my understanding it takes quite a while to get those poles in. So we were looking at getting a couple of those poles to have here in the yard, just, you know, when another one gets hit because it's going to happen. Then luckily, we've standardized, so all the poles on Michigan, Main Street, Broadway, on the trail, they're all the same poles, so they should interchange. But just the pole itself to have it delivered here is eighty five hundred dollars each. So they're not cheap. I'd recommend having two of those on hand, just seeing how long it takes to get and how often they're going to get hit.
Is there any way they can remove those poles or are they just going to let them lay there for a while?
I can ask them to get rid of them. They're not, they're not any good. They need to go go away.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I know you guys approved my spending limit, but I want to get your thoughts on that before I.
I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's going to change.
Well, yeah, better not having a lamp at all.
I don't think they're going to get here any quicker anytime soon.
No.
Lock in a price that they don't.
I think about hauling them away for scrap.
Maybe eighty five hundred dollars today. If it happens a year from now, they're not going to be eighty five hundred dollars, they'll probably be more.
Well, that's true. Well, I've actually gotten a couple of prices, and the other price was quite a bit higher than the eighty five hundred, so. Appreciate that. I'll I'll get those ordered up. The second question I've got here kind of relates to those poles. We've been getting some interest of people wanting to hang banners, advertising, promotional things. Didn't know how the council felt about that, and that also probably be a good thing to talk with Adam on, too, as far as offsite signage. But if there's companies that want to start putting some banners out on those poles, what's the council's thoughts as far as, you know, we're going to require any kind of sponsorship or how do you, how do you see that going?
What's what's our labor cost for our guys to go out there and and hang in banners? That would probably have to be a something we have to, how long does it take them?
Depends on how many they've got to hang up, but it's not, it's not a significant amount.
Okay.
Sounds like something somebody's going to have to manage, though. That's the thing.
I don't really, I think it doesn't, it wouldn't look very good. I think it could look junky, I mean, like billboard.
What if, what if we had somebody that was willing to sponsor some additional banners or decorate Christmas ornaments like we've got on Main Street, but yet they put their logo on the banner?
Now we're talking Christmas.
Well, I know these questions are starting to come to me, so I wanted to get your take on it. Something to be thinking about. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but.
It is for the town to get those for the Christmas.
Yeah.
Kind of takes away, it commercializes Christmas, though, doesn't it?
Just elaborate really quickly on Joe's point is, what you could do is if you had on a banner, you, let's say you had artwork or you had historic photos of Fortville, you know, on the, maybe the bottom portion of the sign, you could say sponsored by this particular company, which could be a way to still have a a public purpose to those banners, but also might be able to get some exposure for those companies and then maybe defray the cost. So something to think about.
Okay, be thinking on it. I was going to let you know, too, that Brian is Brian, our Green Utilities Forum, and he has requested bids from several companies for two new utility trucks. I think those bids are supposed to be back here on the fourth, so it'll probably be the second meeting in next month. We'll be bringing those back before you and asking for approval to go ahead and purchase those two trucks. A big number item that I've got on my list is, we had talked about the regional lift station on south of, say, where two hundred and Fortville Pike tie in. We got a lot of development coming in out that way. All those lift stations and those houses are pumping up through town through a smaller lift station and also taking up a lot of capacity within our existing Old Town sewer system. So we had talked about building a regional lift station in that area that would carry carry the waste in over to three hundred and up to Broadway there where we, where the line goes straight into the sewer treatment plant. Pick some of that weight out of there, and I don't want to steal Adam's thunder here, but I know he's been really busy with building permits out that way, and they're starting to go really fast. So I did have the engineer, I'd asked counsel about engaging with an engineer earlier to see about getting this design. I've got a rough number, what they had given me, it'd be about four million dollars to build this lift station and all the force main to to get it out there. I'll probably have them show up at the next council meeting to talk to you a little bit and then see about getting a contract with them to to get rolling because I feel like we need to probably do this sooner rather than later.
Sure.
Have we decided if it's nine hundred or nine fifty or nine?
Nine twenty five is where they're showing.
Is that where they're thinking? Okay. Thank you.
But their lift station's going to be deep enough that there could be a gravity line go down nine hundred, that it could pick up, you know, gravity that way instead of the force main. Go ahead.
Sounds good.
Okay, the next item I've got, as as you all know, our insurance, we've been through the renewal stages on our coverage, and our insurance company has given us a new quote going forward. They'd given us a quote that ends up being was a hundred and ninety nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per year for our liability coverage. That's outside of my spending limit, so. That's outside of my spending limit, so.
And this is with our original carrier.
It went up about eighty six thousand dollars. A lot of that is based on growth and things costing more money. They've also increased. Quite a few of our deductibles. So a lot of our deductibles have gone up pretty high.
So you need a motion from us to approve the insurance?
Yeah, if you can give, make a motion for me to sign that at that price and not allow me to process it moving forward.
Into the state? Did we look at the state insurance?
Donny, did you remember, or was it Adriana, did we look at the state at all? I think the state had something if there was not anything else.
Last resort.
Last resort, okay. Which we're not at.
We'll tell you, just bringing up the, just so you know. Public official liability, that deductible jumped from five thousand to fifty thousand dollars. So that's a pretty significant jump.
I'll make a motion to approve the. Town insurance at one ninety nine, one hundred ninety nine thousand one hundred and fifty per year.
All in favor? Opposed?
And that's all I have this evening unless you've got something for me.
I, I have something. Can we, the other night I was coming home, I was late from picking up somebody from the airport and. All the caution cones were knocked over in front of the gas station. Can we request of concrete barriers there instead? To divide that traffic ongoing, just a thought.
Yeah, it's a thought. I mean, it's.
No, just a divider between the traffic coming in this way and that way, cause they're, they're, they're out there standing at those cones every day.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those things that they wouldn't use concrete down through there without, and forgive me, I don't know the proper terminology.
Jersey barriers.
Well, it's got the big galvanizers. So you hit that and it collapses several times before it gets into the concrete. And it takes quite a while to get those set up. I'm being very optimistic here and I'm gonna say that they're gonna be finishing up in the next couple of weeks. The new contractor they've got down there seems to be moving a little bit quicker and I'm hoping that the contractor that follows in behind him will do the same. And I can always make that suggestion to Endot, but.
Yeah, just maybe even the plastic ones that are connected or something, just, yeah, it was kind of. Late night when they're all gone, it is kind of.
If you remember when we did Main Street and they put that concrete wall down the middle, they had to use those big. Galvanized dations that bolt down to the ground and.
Yeah, the ones that, that didn't go on Broadway, when the cars fell into the trench, yeah. Yeah, it, I noticed also people making that comment on Facebook that with the, with the cones everywhere, people are gonna run into each other, but.
Yes, I've, I've witnessed a few almost head-ons down there where there was, actually one day a fire truck came out. Started heading west and there was another car coming down right in front of me, had to back up.
People are having accidents, they're actually, or near misses, you're saying?
I, I'd say it's a near miss. Or at least more of a congestion.
But you feel pretty confident it's gonna be done soon?
I hate to say that, but it's been sitting there for.
We've been confident a few times, sir.
We are getting some progress out of them when things are moving, so if they keep moving at the pace they're moving now, then it should be.
It comes back to that question of if people had an accident, who's that, you know, who's at fault with that, you know, who are they gonna try to go sue?
Well, right now it is on Endot and it's on the developer and it's on the property owner. Soon as we go down there and start moving cones around trying to play, you know, like we're the safety people and that'll make, that'll put us on the hook.
Yeah, that's really like an end dot. That's an end dot call to make, okay?
Thank you.
Adam, you have anything for us?
Yeah, really, really quickly, just a, a couple of items. Joe was mentioning about the increased need for. Sewer infrastructure in the southern part of town that would connect up to the plant. We've been seeing a lot of growth unsurprisingly, particularly lately, so for example. I issued, I reviewed and issued from the beginning of January until the end of June, thirty seven. New single family homes, but then in July alone. It was fifty, so and already in, in August, I've looked at probably, I don't know, maybe ten fifteen already. So, I mean, it's, it's a good sign. It, it's hard to. Read a whole lot into the numbers because there are a lot of things that go into that. For example, if a developer is behind schedule in being able to release lots to the home builder, you can see a big glut like that happen at once. But i- if you're reading into the numbers here, here's. What you can read is that the, the market still appears to be strong in Fortville as we're seeing all over the Indianapolis suburbs, so. Definitely keeping busy. I know Jerry and Santa, our building inspector, has been incredibly busy, of course. We, and we've heard from some of the builders that they're nervous that they might not be able to get inspections in a timely fashion. However, we've got that problem, anticipate a problem addressed in that we do have a third party. Company that can do inspections and we pass those costs along on to the. The home builders, so the taxpayers aren't subsidizing that. So that, that will definitely help out. And then also. Our new administrative assistant, Sarah Waldron, you may have seen her, she also functions as our recording secretary of BZA Plan Commission. She comes in three days a week and has been very helpful on the clerical tasks and helping. To get some, some different things out the door, so I think we're in, we're in good shape for now.
As long as we get the sewer in.
Oh, and the, the, one other comment I wanted to make really quickly is. I know there, there's always been a lot of comments online about what's going on with this project or that project and. One of the reasons I'm here is to serve the public and to try to assist with information on different projects that are going on. And of course, it's a small town and people are understandably interested as to what's going on, so. I'm always happy, willing and able to take phone calls or emails if somebody wants to hear the facts on a particular project, so. And they can decide for themselves whether they like it or not, but at least they can hear it from the town as opposed to different things on, online. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. Heath, you have anything for us?
Apologies, I've got a few things tonight. First thing on the list. The, the committee with regarding Landmark Park, our, our recommendations and, and the BOT that came in. My recommendation, and, and I think this follows, and I won't speak for them, but follows Libby and Tanya as well, that we move forward with Reynolds. So we need to get an approval tonight to be able to probably do that based on, on what those two would like to say about it. And that way we can get everything else rolling as far as the, the advertisement and the other things needed to. See where we can go at that point in time with funding and everything else and, and how we're gonna be able to move forward with that Landmark Park project. So that would be my recommendation and the first thing that I have.
And just, just to clear up a little bit too with the. If this is a recommendation, so if this is what the council wants to do, the direction you want to go, then we'll have to advertise this. And it's gotta be advertised seven days before a public hearing, so then after the public hearing and the town council can appoint. And we'll move forward with the selected parties.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to recommend proceeding with that. All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Second thing I have, Joe and I came across some information about the Indiana Trails Grant Process. And, and really I'm just kind of looking, don't really need to vote on this, but just kind of looking for you guys' blessing to pursue what that looks like. They've got a, it's a, a two year, every two years they run a, a grant process. The grant application is open from September through October this year, I believe. We've had some conversations with VS Engineering about what that would look like. And I think in total, it's an eighty twenty grant. We would be responsible for twenty percent. The eighty, the other eighty percent would be covered up to four hundred thousand dollars, so if we were to able to move forward with this and have. Eighty thousand dollars at stake in it, we would in turn get the extra four hundred thousand, which would allow us, I think, to maybe. Start doing some, some trails in, you know, connectivity through whether it's Landmark Park, whether it's connecting, or I'm sorry. Well, Landmark Park and Memorial Park, but connecting maybe the trails in Hamilton County there at Flat Rock and connecting that into Memorial Park. Just obviously some more walkability. So really, I'm just kind of want to make sure that everybody on the council is on board with pursuing kind of, I, it's not a guarantee. It's a, it's application process. We just, we want to be able to start having those conversations because the, the time is coming up. To be able to, to get those applications in, so really I just would like to get your guys' feedback if you have any. And make sure that you guys are okay with moving forward, looking at that.
Can we actually get you to vote on it? Because I know it requires approval for us to go after even a grant because of the funding. I mean, that's the way our policies are written up, so. The council approves us to go for the grant. I said it would be better if we had a vote because our policy reads that we're supposed to get council approval before applying for the grants. If it's gonna obligate the town for any money.
What was it again?
Indiana Trails Grant.
I'll make a motion to. He's permissioned to move forward with the Indiana Trails Grant, applying for the Indiana Trails Grant.
All in favor? Opposed?
Couple more items for you. We finished up with the survey for the parks. I want to thank Shelley from the Greenfield Reporter getting that out in, in article. We ended up, the goal. The realistic goal set forth from the consulting company was around five percent of the last population on the census. We ended just shy of that and we had right around two hundred respondents, which is still pretty good. And after that article came out, it bumped about a hundred, so it was a, it was a, it was a good, a good read for us, a good, a good help in that direction. Just so everybody's aware, they're gonna work on, right now they're working on the paperwork for all this stuff and kind of compiling all the data. And all of their recommendations and all the different things. They're hoping to have a packet for council just to kind of look at and review. By ten one, and they would like myself or them, I, I gotta get with them yet on who's going to do the presentation, but on the. Council meeting, first council meeting in October, we'd like to go over the findings for, from the surveys and everything. Throughout all the discussions about funding and everything else. I- in that meeting, and then they're looking to be able to put that in place. And having the, the council finally adopt the Parks Master Plan at the first. First council meeting in November, so it'll give us about a month to review all those findings and make any changes and then be able to adopt that master plan. Hopefully first part of November, and then we are looking to submit it to the DNR by the deadline on the, you know, middle of November. They're looking to submit it by the fifteenth of November, so that's the plan as far as the. The, the Parks Master Plan is concerned. Is there any questions as far as, as far as that? I know they're supposed to be working on an executive summary for me that I can get to you guys as soon as I get it from them, just kind of a quick snapshot of everything that kind of came back in. From the survey perspective, but then the deeper findings we'll, we'll have in a packet and have everything ready for everybody to kind of. Take a look at and give you guys some time to, to really digest it, so. Last thing that I have, super quick, the basketball hoops drilling started today. So hopefully, I, I'm not sure, I think they said three or four days. Right now they're getting everything prepped to be able to put in the new. The new poles, and once that stuff's done, they'll remove the old ones and then we'll start hopefully the construction of the, the poles this week, so.
Did they come in?
I, I have not, they, the parts are not in yet, but they said it's a local facility. They can pretty much get them anytime. They've got to prep everything before they bring them over here, so it, it should be done this week. Any other questions for me?
Have you come up with a, maybe set up something where people can auction some of that stuff off? Like those basketball goals and. Well, equipment.
Those basketballers aren't gonna be, but they're cutting those. There's the easiest way for them to get it out without destroying all that asphalt was to cut their, they're. Cutting them just below grade and then patching the concrete over top of that before they board the new ones, so. But speaking of that, we do have a few items left from the park renovations. That we need to look at, maybe declaring surplus, the old slide, there's a couple of small things. Not much of it was salvageable after it got pulled out and. Thousands of pounds of concrete along with it, so there, there's just a couple of items here and there, that turtle that's sitting out back. There's, like I said, just a, just a few things, but I'll, I'll get a list together and we'll see if we can maybe declare that surplus and at that point in time. You know, we can put it out there for, if anybody wants to bet on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Patrick is not here. Adriana, you have anything for us?
I do not, unless someone asks something for me.
Alex?
I don't either, unless you have any questions for me.
Public comment? Come on, Dave, you're fine. Come on, Em.
I'm Dave Beetz and I'm a resident on Poplar Street. I was wondering, Heath, on this. Did I understand that this community center is rented out for another year and can nobody else use it? Or is?
It's just the gym.
Just the gym? Do they use it every day or, or is there, if some people wanted to get in there and start a walking club, let's say in the wintertime? Is that gonna be available or?
We're working on.
So it, it might be lost to the public then from here on out because we're gonna make a revenue stream out of it or. Well, in the community center, it sounded like you pretty much have it all rented out.
Just the gym.
And you just said IU Health possibly coming in there too.
U B is still there, still get rented out.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Anybody else online? Does it look like it? Okay, council members, Libby.
I don't have anything.
Brian?
Nothing for me, thank you.
I'll do it at the end, yeah.
I have an announcement. I've been offered and received a job and I'm gonna be moving away from here and I'll be resigning from the council shortly. So when I ran. I heard there wasn't gonna be anybody to take the. I heard there wasn't gonna be anybody to take the seat, so I guess I leave things not much worse off than when I started. But for whoever would like to do this eventually, or for whoever Tanya picks, cause I think she gets to appoint the next person, it's a hard job.
It's not me. Republican Party picks it.
Oh, well, it's a hard job anyway. I received a lot of advice, though. Most of it unsolicited, so I can share it with the next person. That's all.
Um, no comment.
I got a comment tonight, so I got something here I wanna read to you guys. I wrote this so I didn't get off track, I just wanted to, um, address a few things, so. There's been some false information that was put out on social media, and normally I don't talk about that here, but I've chose to do that. And in some public conversations. I wanna start by saying that everyone on this council is affected and must live with the decisions that we make as council. None of us are immune to any of it. Before being a member of the council, I had my own ideas about how things worked in a municipality, and I thought it was like running my business, but I've found out very quickly it is not. Um, the town itself has hard controls that are monitored by the state that rarely allow mistakes. I just wanna say that as far as I'm concerned, all the town employees from the manager down to the utility department, regardless if they live in this town or not, work very hard for this community every day and want the town to be the best it can be. I see what they deal with every day, and it's not easy most of the time. We are all human and not infallible, so please try to show them some grace. Um, they work really hard. Mostly there have been accusations made about the town's liability insurance or lack of. I don't know if anybody's heard that or not, but, um, I wanna make the correction that the to- the town was never without liability insurance. Um, it's very difficult to get liability insurances today, even at a reasonable cost, because the industry's taken a huge hit. Um, there was threat of a possible non-renewal, not a cancellation from our current carrier because of the number of claims the town has incurred and the liability concerns behind commissioners and elected officials insinuating or recommending the community some form of litigation against the town to receive compensation for something that could have been handled outside of court and saving taxpayer dollars. As Joe, uh, just mentioned, our current carrier will be renewing our liability insurance on our contract renewal date with no lapse in our coverage. The council right now is not at liberty to discuss anything pertaining to a case and contract mentioned on social media, nor are we at liberty to have any conversation with the plaintiff in this case until it's settled. I do wanna make clear that any contract that is presented by the town is designed and reviewed by our attorney before any signatures on the contract. There's never been a contract written by an employee. I have seen and heard crazy accusations about myself, other council members and town employees. I will never repeat anything that I know is not fact. It's just not in my nature to do that. If I don't have the answer, I'll certainly try to get it for you. All I can do is recommend that you block out all the noise and seek the facts in the right place. If you really want to know what's happening with a project, or a current development project, or anything in general to do with the town, we're all accessible by email, most of us by phone. Uh, we can, you can reach out to the town manager, planning administrator, myself. Uh, do not look at answers on social media like Fortville Happenings to go to the town's Facebook page or the website. Don't expect questions to be answered by the council or town manager on Fortville Happenings. Email or call or come to a council meeting and ask your questions. I attend every council and commission meeting to stay on top of the process for our new development, any changes to our existing town. I also wanna be able to answer any questions related to those meetings, and that's why I do that. And I believe in practical common sense. I know that's something that doesn't come around often these days, but I do. And that's how I base most of my decisions. I take my position seriously and want the very, the very best uh, for my one and only place I call home. So hopefully that clears up some rumors and other conversation that's been happening. And if anybody has anything to say about that, please feel free to call one of us, or come, come see us. We'll be happy to elaborate. Okay. Uh, I need a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:45.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.